Hello everyone and welcome once again to the City Commissioners Report. And our guest today, I don't know if I'm your guest or you're my guest. Anyway, it's Barry Chaney, City Commissioner, and it's always a pleasure talking with Barry about the city of Pikeville. Not only do we want to know what's happening with the city in terms of government, but we need to know. Barry, you're our authority of the day.
Well, I don't know how much of authority I am Homer, but thank you anyway, and I am your guest.
Oh, okay, fine with me. You said in the council of those that make decisions Barry. Before we get to that though, which is hard business, what I call hard business, let's talk about a development that took place on Monday of this week of the week of our taping. Keith Casebolt of East Kentucky Broadcasting, of whom I have a nodding acquaintance, announced his resignation. What do you see as the implications of that?
Well, he's going to be missed very much Homer. I've known Keith a long time. I knew him before he knew me. I worked with his father on the railroad years ago. And you know, he always talked about Keith and I've been to their home when Keith was just a little boy.
Sam, you're referring to Sam, his father?
Yeah.
He refers to Keith as his little baby boy.
Yeah, yes he does. And but now Keith has always been energetic, intelligent, and he'll be very much missed in this community. He's done a lot of good work in this community.
He's a real asset to our community, there's no doubt about it. My only wish is, I hope that he does not leave the area, that he stays with us and shares with us his wealth of knowledge.
I do too Homer. He will be very, very much missed if he does leave the community.
Let's talk about coal for a moment, if you will Barry. Whatever happens even as broad as internationally affects us here in the mountains, we are a coal-based economy.
Yes, sir.
There are things happening domestically and internationally. You want to address that?
Well, according to the paper this morning, W. Keith Hall has announced that there is going to be a signing of a contract between the nation of India and a local Kentucky Coal Group, and this is going to be for 60 million tons for 25 years. Very big order and will meet a tremendous need in India for power. I think before the show started, we were talking about the power grid in the United States, how updated it is and how the power can be shifted from one side of the country to the other in just a matter of seconds. Though India's not that far advanced yet. Their energy demands are tremendous and when their grid is overloaded, they just pull the switch and put people in dark. So they're quite a bit behind us, but their need for power is tremendous. And as well as all developing countries around the nation. I read an article the other day about the importance of electricity to developing countries and the cheapest form, or cheapest way to get electricity is through coal. And you know, they're wanting to take advantage of it, so we could see a pretty good uptick in our coal business and it would be, you know, to foreign markets, which 47% of our coal, well, the export coal is up 47%, while domestic coal's down 37% right now. And but one of the things that's holding us up on our export coal is the room that's available in our docks to put it on barges to ship it across the water. So you know, as that continues to progress, I think, I heard the other day that there are plans for three more new docks being built specifically to export coal.
You're talking about the docks array in Norfolk and the east coast?
Yeah, yeah. And well, these are going to be farther to the south and they'll be, you know, they'll be specific for coal exports. So it's, that market is looking up and you know, electrical needs around the world are increasing. You know, the importance of electricity to a developing country, I mean, you, from turning on a light to turning on a computer, you've got to have it. And that information technology sector keeps growing and gives everybody an advantage that you didn't have before.
This positive news comes on the heels of Governor Steve Beshear's visit to India a little over a week ago. The order followed that visit, I suppose they're both associated in some form, 25-year contract, six million a year. Booth Energy here in the Pikeville area will be a beneficiary of that order. And I don't know if you agree or not, but I wouldn't be surprised if the governor didn't go to Japan, uh, China here shortly.
Well, I hope he does. I may even pay for his ticket if he were to go.
May bring back another big order. Barry, the city of Pikeville, of which you are an elected representative, entered into a lawsuit against the National Coal Association some time ago, I don't know, four months ago, maybe six?
Well, that was 2010 Homer.
Oh, that's far back.
Yeah, we were, we were partnering that lawsuit with.
Give us some background on that.
Well, you know, we, in our discussions about it, we knew that the EPA, their actions that they were taking were illegal. The implementation, or the forcing of water laws and stuff, the way they were doing it, it was illegal. And in fact, they were requiring mines to have water as pure as bottled water you would buy out of a store in the runoff, in which that's, you know, if it runs off the mountain anywhere, you know, it's not going to be that pure. One of the things about our streams out here, they are cleaner than most of the streams in Kentucky, and we have, we've had mining for years here. But we discussed the, what this was going to mean to us, and we had, we had talked about suing the EPA ourselves. And Rusty Davis mentioned the National Coal Association had.
Rusty being the Pikeville City Attorney?
Yeah, Pikeville City Attorney, very intelligent attorney too, by the way. Keeps us out of trouble. But he mentioned that the National Coal Association and the Kentucky Coal Association had the EPA sued, and that he was certain that we could partner with them in that lawsuit and wouldn't have to take, take on the EPA ourselves, which we were willing to do that, because we, we knew the implications of those permits not being, being issued, what it would mean to our local economy. And you've seen the 750 miners in Electric County, 100 miners this week in Pike County, I'm not sure how many in West Virginia, but all that, all those things have an effect on Pikeville. So we wanted to, we wanted to stand up for our coal community and our people, and we wanted to join this suit and set right what was wrong.
All right, that's the background on it. Where does it stand at the moment?
Well, we have won our lawsuit. This will affect Lisa Jackson, who is the Director of the EPA. The suit requires her to start issuing those permits. And does, does restrict their, where they impose these extra regulations on the water to peel those back and do them the way they're written to be done, let's say. The only, the only problem with that Homer is that, you know, this administration seems to ignore legal judgments. They, they sometimes feel like they're above the law, I guess, above court decisions. They can appeal, some people think that they are going to, and then others think that they may just change the regs where they can do something else, but.
The overall argument Barry, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the states should enforce the rules about clean water and clean air.
Yeah.
And the federal government through the Environmental Protection Agency has usurped the state's power to do that.
Yes.
Now we may be coming back in the other direction with about 30 permits in the pipeline that the states can consider.
Yes, that's true. In fact, we've got a, we've got a coal mine up on Johns Creek that's, that is in the process of rebuilding old tipple for loadout purposes, and they've been waiting on three permits to start their operation up. So you know, hopefully they'll get it, get those permits and be able to get started. And we have had some coal operations go bankrupt simply because they couldn't get permits. They had orders, but they couldn't get a permit to operate.
If the regulations are eased, anything like we think they're going to be, there could be others waiting out there to get into coal mining and seek their permits also, so it could mean new business.
It could be new business. We're in a peculiar situation in the market where you have low gas prices right now. A lot of our, a lot of our electrical companies are switching to natural gas and are using that for the time being, even though it doesn't give the BTU that coal burn, that coal burn gives, it does allow them to come within the regulations of the Clean Air Act. I think 2015, I'm a ball, coal burning power companies will have to have scrubbers in a lot of these, a lot of these facilities, instead of installing those scrubbers, which are very expensive, are switching to natural gas because of the low price right now. But that is a, the energy market is very volatile. I think two years ago, natural gas was selling for $11.66 a yard. Few months ago, it was selling for $1.60, and I think this week it's around $3.00 a yard. So you know, that's a very volatile market, and you know, by the end of the year, we could see them turning the gas valve off and ordering coal, so you know, it's.
That would be the best of both worlds for us.
That would be the best of both worlds for us.
Mm-hmm. All right, the last time I saw you, other than just a few minutes ago as we started this taping, was at the Pike County Courthouse Fiscal Court Room, where the fathers of the county, seven of them, six magistrates and Judge Rutherford about to take a vote on the airport resolution.
Yes Homer, I, you know, I could go over there every once in a while and attend those meetings, and I especially wanted to be at this one. I have, I have, I had a lot of emotion invested in this, in this whole process, but you know.
Optimism tempered with dread.
Right, right. And you know, the, in the coal forum, I remember Hillman Dotson and Leo Murphy coming to the coal forum and, or the commercial air forum, sorry, and listening to what the panel had to say and asking questions. And in that panel, Debbie Keith Hall was talking about the India delegation coming to Pike County and how that he went to Lexington to pick them up at the airport and then spent two and a half hours apologizing for not having commercial air service in Pikeville, that he could have just brought them right in, they could have just flown right in. But Hillman Dotson and Leo Murphy, both at, at that forum, got some good answers, good information, and both of them left that forum, so were in support of commercial air service. Then August 7th, you know, the vote was coming, it was, we thought it would happen July 22nd, but Magistrate Chris Harris, who couldn't be at that meeting, had sent over a letter requesting that the vote be put off. And we were, we were very disappointed, you know, time is of the essence and.
I think I was at that meeting also.
Yeah, well, time is of the essence, and we were, we were disappointed that what didn't happen that day. But August 7th, it did happen. Judge Rutherford made the motion. Hillman Dotson seconded the motion. There was a long pause between the motion and the second, and you know, for a second there, my heart, I thought, oh no.
It's going to die without a second.
Going to die without a second. And you know, I almost cheered when, I got up and cheered when Hillman Dotson, District Five magistrate, seconded the motion. And he made a courageous defense for commercial air service. And you know, he, you know, he's a tough guy, he's like me and the other four magistrates that voted for it, you know, it's, you know, you know what it's like when you come into work and they tell you, you know, you're going to be laid off next Friday, go ahead and make preparation. And then when you get laid off next Friday, you're not real sure what you're going to do, and you start looking. And you know, that's, historically, that's what happens a lot in our coal industry is you get laid off on Friday and you start looking, and when you can't find anything, you leave. I think you'll remember in 1990, because of the outmigration of the eighties and the downturn in coal market, we lost Congressional Seat 7, the old Carl Perkins seat. Now we only have six congressmen representing this in Washington, the city of seven. And it's because of that outmigration during the coal downturns. And I hope all these coal miners that are laid off right now aren't preparing to leave. I hope they can hang on a little longer till we, this business can come back. But anyway, back to the vote. You know, I was, I was very pleased with this. I couldn't stay to the end of the meeting. I wanted to thank Magistrate Dotson for his second and for his vote and for his comments. So when I got up Saturday morning, or Wednesday morning, first thing I did, I called Magistrate Dotson on the phone and I thanked him and told him how courageous I thought it was that he made the second and spoke the way he did and how much I appreciated it. We had a really good conversation. We talked about different ways the city and county could work together. We talked about maybe having a couple of magistrates, a couple of mayor commissioners get together once a quarter and meet and talk about what's important to the county and what's important to the city and where we could work together. And you know, and that really wouldn't be a bad thing to have. That happened also with Elkhorn and Colrun, you know, to, that we could find out what's important for all of our communities.
Let me ask you Barry, interrupt you just for a second.
Go ahead.
Now that the resolution has passed, it was for $1 million coal severance tax.
Yeah.
It's discretionary fund for the governor to send wherever he sees fit.
Yeah.
Let's assume he sends it to Pike County, we hope he does. That million dollars will match a grant already in place to the city of Pikeville.
Right.
What is the timeline? What do you do next now that you've received the yes on the resolution?
Okay, well, the next, the next thing's going to, going to happen is Luke Schmidt is going to be going to Mingo County, West Virginia.
He's an airport consultant.
Airport consultant. He's, well, he's going to go to the chamber members and get a $500,000 travel bank established. He's also going to go to Mingo County, West Virginia. They've expressed interest and wanting to do something to support this. Wise County, well, Virginia, Dickerson County, Virginia, they've also expressed support, and they want to be a part of this financially. And I think Buchanan County maybe is the other county over there, they also want it because.
When you say support, that is a synonym for money.
That is right, that is money. They want to put money towards this. They've discovered they, they could not use their coal, their coal, Virginia or West Virginia coal severance money for the project, so in their community, they want to raise some money to put in this travel package because of what it will mean to them. You know, they, they fall within this 13 county area, and you would be surprised Homer at how many people come from Mingo County, West Virginia into Pikeville. One of our local furniture stores, almost a third of their business comes from Mingo County, West Virginia.
The development of the 119 corridor between Nodewald and Williamson has opened up that area.
Yes, it has. And you know, after 119 opened up, our Lowe's store went to number one store in their district. So that has meant a, meant a lot to Pikeville to have that 119 opened up.
Explain the travel bank if you can Barry. A business will put money in in anticipation of using the service?
That's right. This, this will be, well, as you said, anticipation of using the service. This will be companies that do a lot of flying. It's sort of prepaying your ticket.
Yes.
Is about what it amounts to. If they use it all, then they pay more. And if they don't use it all, then you know, they, they will get it back at the end of the, at the end of the two years.
Now, my understanding from listening to the procedures as an outsider, the airline, whoever it may be, and there are two under consideration at this time.
Right.
Maybe more now, I'm about a week out from the decision. But when the airline is decided, they will be subsidized to the extent they need to be at the very beginning of the service.
Right.
There's a chance they won't need it, but if they do, there will be about two and a half million dollars.
Right, that, it'd be about two and a half million dollars. And you know, this is not uncommon to way, to the way commercial air service is established all over the country. You know, Magistrate Harris, he was, had a lot of negative comments about commercial air service and you know, he read the summary of the community, small community air service grant, and he was talking about the dismal record that this had of establishing commercial air service.
He cited the figure of about 30% success rate.
30%. But you know, I wish he had read further and read the essential air service grant, because I've read both of them, and the, the essential air service program pays for those, a lot of those airlines that still, even though they're providing commercial air service to these small communities, it's a failing proposition for the airline. In order to keep that service connected, this essential air service money subsidizes those airlines to keep them flying into these small communities. And the reason for that Homer, is because what commercial air service brings to a community in economic development. Most of these small communities, some of them, it's a third of their, a third of their economic development depends on commercial air service, some of them two-thirds. And to take commercial air service out of those small communities destroys their economy. So the government views it as a good investment to have commercial air service in those small communities. That is a closed program, we won't qualify for that program. But it, it's an example of what commercial air service brings to a community. One of the things that, that has hindered us here in central Appalachia is that we're isolated. Commercial air service breaks that isolation barrier for us. And you know, it allows people to come right here instead of coming to Charleston, as our best community has told us, the, you know, people just won't drive two and a half hours to central Appalachia, the heart of central Appalachia.
When you say two and a half hours, that applies to Charleston, Huntington, Bristol, Lexington, all of those are about two and a half hours away.
They don't have to. And you know, to see this advantage of commercial air service and what it will bring to our community, breaking this, this isolation barrier, which keeps so many of our people chained to poverty, you know, I can't understand why anyone would vote against something so important as this.
What is the next step? Will you form, you being the groups involved, those who are interested in the subject, form a committee to put a plan together to offer to an airline?
Well, Luke Schmidt will be in charge of that and the air committee that's in place already. They will get this package, Luke Schmidt will, will begin to recruit these airlines. And from what I understand, these two airlines that have already committed or have said they were interested, have done their own study in this local area and found it to be profitable.
Can you share with us some of the local names involved in that effort, the committee members that we may recognize?
Well, Bill Hickman's on, on that committee. Let's see, I can't think, I've drawn a blank.
Who represents the city, who represents the county?
Well, now the, the city, the city or the county are not represented on the air committee. The Jared Arnett is on it and a few more people from the chamber. But it's, it's local community members, and it's not necessarily a government entity, so there's no one from the county or the city on that air committee.
Will it be the consultant, Luke Schmidt, that will bring the incentive package up to speed to offer to these airlines?
Since he's the expert in, in that area, and this is what he, he's done many of these, he's brought it to small towns in Florida and Indiana and Kansas City, Missouri. And he will be, he will be the one to bring this package forward and look it over and tell them exactly what, what will work and what won't work.
Is there any other local government involvement or approval that will need to be sought before?
No.
This is the last step?
This was the last step, and it was a big one. It was a big one, and you know, I'm, I'm just happy that it's, that it was able to get through.
I don't think we mentioned it passed the fiscal court five to two.
Right, passed fiscal court five to two. Magistrate Jeff Anderson, District One, voted against it, which you know, day one would be 14 jobs in his district. And you know, I'm sure he's got his reasons, he was concerned that it would fail, but you know, you just can't be afraid of progress Homer. You've, you've got to step out sometime and go ahead and do it. And you know, this is, this is typical, the way we get business in Pike County. Governor Patton, you know, I used the example the other night in the commission meeting when he came up with tax incentives and incentives to build the cookie factory over here, as we call it. You know, the baking industry wasn't lined up to come into eastern Kentucky. They had to have incentives to come here, and really to, to come to Kemper, Kentucky. You know, that was, that was huge to get somebody to come in here for, for that. Mountain Top Bakery came, they've since been purchased by Calogs. Calogs employs 400 people there, and you know, they, that, those jobs pay from, I think they start you out around $16, and they go all the way up to $20, $21 an hour over there. They do have health insurance, health benefits. From what I understand, some of the people that work over there really like it, they're treated well, and it is a union job, so it's, it's something good for our, for our community, but.
Although, although we've made progress on the subject of the airport, it's still not a slam dunk.
No.
Governor Steve Beshear will look at this and it will become a part of 29 other projects seeking coal severance tax funds.
Well, now we're, now we're getting into a subject that kind of, kind of gets, pushes my butt.
Okay, let's hear it.
Well, you know, this, this is multi-county coal severance money. Our miners mine the coal, they go in, they mine the coal, they make the money for our coal operators, our coal operators pay this tax off of every ton of coal mined. And you know, that's paid in, a portion of it is held back for multi-county projects.
It's not the regular allocation made every year to the counties?
No.
This is a different fund, governor only.
Governor only. And you know, that's the Department of Local Government. You've got to submit an application, takes support of two counties and ought to be on this application.
And those county that joined with Pike County?
Floyd County.
All right.
In this one. But it takes two counties to agree on the project that's submitted, and the Department of Local Government will make the decision. The later those applications are sent in, the less consideration that they have. And it's all about availability of the money that's there.
My understanding is the governor's discretionary fund contains $19 million at this time?
That's correct. And I forget, I seem like the, I think there are 29 applications in and it exceeds $19 million. So you know, there's, there's going to have to be some decisions made. But you know, until this year, this year, we've had two applications from the county for multi-county funds. And one was $400,000 for some design work at the industrial park up next to Elkhorn and Coal Town. But until this year, Pike County has not submitted one application for multi-county coal severance funds.
From that fund?
From that fund. For the, for the past 10 years, until this year, not one application.
So the point you're making is it's time to ship some up this week?
Well, you know, Magistrate Harris, when he was talking about commercial air service, he referenced how that our people were leaving and how money was scarce. But you know, 10 years prior, you know, we should have been working, having projects But, you know, ten years prior, you know, we should have been working, having projects, working with our local counties, having economic development projects. You know, why, why isn't this being done? Why hasn't this been done? Is it going to continue in the future? You know, we've, we've...
Your frustration is coming through.
I am. I would have liked to have this opportunity with the city, Homer, to be able to apply for this, which we did. We were asked to submit the application for the commercial air service grant. There was one project in two thousand and seven that we wanted to submit a application for multi-county funds. But at that time, we were told that it couldn't happen, that our local, local fiscal court wouldn't support what we were wanting to do with it, so...
Hopefully, this is a sign for the future, and we'll get everything in order and on track.
I hope so. I hope so. And it, it's so critical for us to access these funds and use these funds. And if our coal market does pick up and these funds do increase, I, you know, I hope that we can come up and continue to diversify our economy. Because, Homer, in nineteen sixty-two, I may be getting, I'm way off subject here, you know, I hope, I hope I'm not, but in nineteen sixty-two, there were more people in Pike County than there were in nineteen sixty-nine. And the reason being is the coal market dropped, bottom fell out of it. When our coal market drops, our young people don't want to be unemployed, unemployed. So, they go someplace else to get work. And these are, these, these people that leave are, are, are trained workforce, are skilled workforce. That is our outmigration, and they don't come back. Many of my senior class, after the coal boom of the seventies, they left and they're in other places. And thanks to Facebook, I'm in touch with them now. But when we have a downturn in our coal economy, we lose our skilled worker and our skilled workforce. We have got to diversify our economy so that we can keep those people here for as long as they want to stay. We can't have people be unemployed.
Let me tell you about staying and leaving. We're going to have to leave.
Oh, well, I'm sorry.
Things have moved along here so quickly.
Yes.
Did you know we didn't even get to any city business specifically?
Well...
We'll try to next time.
Next time, we'll jump right in city business. There's plenty of it going on, plenty of development going on. And, you know, we've, these next, these next two years are, are going to be great for the city of Pikeville and for the whole community because...
Let me echo that and say the last two years have been pretty exciting, too.
Well, they have, they have. But, you know, we, we've got, we're getting opportunities. The progress that we've, that we've already achieved, we're getting, getting opportunities that we can build off this and expand what we've already done. And I'm telling you, I'm, I'm so excited about the next two to four years here in the city of Pikeville that...
I feel your excitement, Barry. Folks, that's it for the city commissioners report for today. Barry, see you in a couple of weeks, maybe sooner.
Okay, Homer.
Thanks.
I may stick around and talk to you.
Well, good. See you, folks.